Seven o'clock, seven o'clock. All right. Hey, good evening, everyone. Let's call to order the Oakland Town Commission meeting for October 28, 2025. Everybody could please stand for the pledge or remain standing for the invocation. All right. Good evening, Kathy.
Good evening. We'll call Commissioner Keller.
Here.
Vice Mayor Satterfield.
Here.
Mayor Taylor. Commissioner Ramos.
Present.
Commissioner McMillan.
Present.
Okay, so first item on the agenda is a proclamation for Week of the Family for November 1st to the 8th. I'd like to read that now. Whereas the town of Oakland is blessed with the multitude of families and the central part of the culture, social, and spiritual fabric of our community, and the town of Oakland commissioners recognize that strong families are at the center of strong communities, that children's lives live better lives when their families are strong, and that families are strong when they live in communities that connect them to the economic opportunities, social network, and services. And everyone has a role to play in making families successful, including neighborhood organizations, businesses, nonprofit agencies, policymakers, and of course, families themselves. And during the week of November 1st through the 8th, 2025, town residents should take time to honor the importance of families and recommit to enhancing the extending and extending the special connections that support and strengthen them through the year. And the town of Oakland will join other Orange County municipalities, agencies, and organizations to honor and celebrate the family unit, the bedrock of our community. Now therefore, I Shane Taylor by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the town of Oakland, of Florida, and on behalf of the entire town commission do hereby proclaim the week of November 1st through the 8th of 2025 in the town of Oakland, Week of the Family, families support each other. Thank you. You want a picture? I had to bring it up. We'll come over there. Come around there.
Yes, very good. Yes, Saturday is the mayor's family fun day. It's completely free. They have pony rides, rock wall obstacle courses, all kinds of fun things. This year, for the first time, they have the whip. I don't know. I guess we'll see what that's like. It's a ride, I'm sure, but, and live entertainment and Jerry Demings, of course, will be there because it's the mayor's family fun day presenting awards to schools. And next time, I want a school from Oakland to win the awards. So I'll be around encouraging entries in our contest because the award's based on which school submits the most entries. And so I'll be back. And so, but thank you so much. I have so many wonderful memories of time spent in Oakland at the activities you put on. They're always wonderful. They're always family friendly, and they're all year long. And that's every week is the Week of the Family in Oakland. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to our consent agenda, and on the consent agenda tonight is minutes from our 1014, 2025 Town Commission regular meeting, approval of a mutual aid agreement with Lake County, and approval of appointments to the canvassing board for the March 10th, 2026 general election. Any questions or comments? Okay, here now, entertain a motion.
Motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Again?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next on the list is a resolution 2025-12 for the Oakland Avenue Charter School Budget Amendment. And you need to read.
A resolution of the Town Commission of Oakland, Florida, adopting an amended budget for fiscal year 2024, 2025, and providing for conflicts of variability and an effective date.
Okay, anybody talking about it? A lot of people here tonight, too, Gabby. Let that make you nervous. Oh, somebody's walking out.
One less one. All right, so this is just more housekeeping. So the auditors were here last week, her last commission meeting, and they mentioned that the school needed to do a budget amendment. It was after the fact, so it was more so just to stay in compliance, just because we're all under the same tax regulations and auditing regulations as the school and the town. So normally, an amendment needs to be done within 60 days of their year end. So we were well past that. So it was just more so to stay in alignment. But they mentioned that the reason why it was over, it was for those school recognition funds that they received for getting the A-plus status. So the audit reflected that they were over by about $94,000. They got $108,000 in recognition funds, so that 108 just got divided amongst all of the expenditures, cleared that 94,000. Then the remaining that was in the green essentially got put into their reserves. So that is reflected in the amendment. Mike Bryn Jolson, our contracted CPA, helped make it pretty for you guys. And moving forward, if they, there is a budget amendment needed, we will be doing it prior to the audit. Like I said, they have to do it within 60 days, so.
And the audits, when? When is the next audit?
So their audit needs to be done by September 30th, whereas our audit needs to be done by June 30th. So it's a little different because their year end ends June 30th. So as soon as we do our audit, the school's year ends, that's when we'll have to do their budget amendment, present that, and then their audit would be, and then we would start all over again. It's just a big old cycle. So I did want to mention that even though they received the money and that, but they spent it, that's the reason why we need to do the budget amendment. So a budget amendment is just reflecting on, they said they were going to spend X amount of dollars in expenditures. They spent more than that, which is why the budget amendment was needed. Even though they were still okay overall, it wasn't just those particular line items that they were overspent, so.
Bottom line, they're made whole.
Yeah, they're fine. Yeah, and now they're just made whole, so. Any other questions? Okay.
Any questions from, no, everybody's good? Okay, if there's no questions, we'll take a motion.
Make that motion to accept resolution 2025-12 as presented.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Gabby.
See you next week with, or next time with our budget amendment.
Can't wait. All right, so we're going to move on to, it's like three ordinances we have on the docket tonight. So we'll start with ordinance 2025-05. This is Bryley Farms, first reading of the ordinance for Bryley Farms, Phase 2.
An ordinance of the town of Oakland, Florida, adopting a First Amendment to the Development Agreement and Preliminary Subdivision Plan for the Bryley Farm Phase 2 Plan Development as recorded in the public records of Orange County, Florida, document number 20220374930, uncertain real property owned by Bryley Land Holdings LLC, as more particularly described herein, making findings and providing for conflicts of variability and for an effective date.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, Brad Quinnis with Wade Trim, serving as your contracted town planner. I have a short PowerPoint for you tonight to go over this proposed amendment for Bryley Farm Phase 2. And so Kathy will bring it up here for me real quick. So as she's bringing in this up, as the mayor said, what this first reading is for is for the First Amendment to the Bryley Farm Phase 2 Plan Development. It's also for approval of their preliminary subdivision plan for this development. A little bit on the project background, I'm sure everybody remembers this project. This has been around for a few years. This project is comprised of basically three pieces. The first piece is Phase 1A, Phase 1B, and Daniel's Cove. Those are all have been fully approved, and they are actually under construction today. Then the next, the last part of Bryley Farm Development is Phase 2, which is the part that is before you this evening. As you may recall, Phase 2 was previously approved by the Town Commission in 2022, and there is an existing development agreement for Phase 2 of this project. However, this project was then sold to new owners, and those new owners did revise the plan that was originally approved in 2022 by the Town Commission, which is the reason why it's coming back to you all for an amendment to that planned development. The other important reason is that in 2022, that existing development agreement that the town has referenced the Bryley Farm Design Guidelines and Architectural Manual, and it had a date, February 22nd, 2022, and it referenced it as if it already existed. It does not exist. We did confirm that it was never done. It was never submitted to the town officially. We actually confirmed that with the previous ownership on this project. So part of this amendment also is now adopting the architectural and design guidelines for Phase 2 as part of this amendment. The other parts of this amendment is they're actually reducing the lot count. They were originally approved at 111 single-family lots, and it's now being reduced down to 87 lots. Basically, what they're doing is they're increasing the lot sizes within the project. So they do have a revised lot layout and also proposing some of the design guidelines and architectural standards for this project. So that's what's before you. So again, the highlights of what's being requested is to approve what you see on the right-hand side of that screen, the revised lot layout for the Bryley Farm project, which would be included as part of your PD amendment. Approval of the design guidelines that are now being proposed, I will tell you now, and I'll tell you again. What is being proposed for Bryley Farm Phase 2 is the same as what the Town Commission had already approved for Phase 1 that you did earlier this year for this. So this is matching what has already been approved for the rest of the project. In terms of the tree protection mitigation, they will be providing tree mitigation for trees that are removed, which will include planting on their lots, on each of the residential lots, as well as within the common areas and other open spaces within the project. And if there are short on the amount that they need to replace, which would be calculated during the final engineering plan review, then they would pay a mitigation fee for that remaining inches of trees to be replaced. And then lastly, one of the big changes is with the wastewater infrastructure. So in the existing development agreement, what it does say is that the town would pay the full cost for a regional lift station here within Bryley Farm Phase 2. The developer has agreed now to pay the town $199,333 towards that lift station in Forest Main. They will also pay the utility impact fees, you know, when they come in for building permits. How that number was calculated is that's what's called a proportionate share payment based on the cost of that infrastructure. So the cost was $1.1 million. The town did receive a $500,000 grant for it, so the remaining balance was $600,000. Based on the 87 lots that they would be developing, they would be utilizing approximately 32% of the capacity of that lift station, and that's how we get to the $199,333. And the applicant has agreed to that payment for that. In terms of the design standards, again, this is similar to what you had previously approved in Bryley Farm Phase 1. There are different lot types, that each of those different lot types will have their own design stand, in terms of layout standards, setbacks, and things, based on where they're located, based on their characteristics. Also, and so here are the lot types, Lot Type E. I'm not going to go over each of the standards, but you can see them in your agenda item in the packet. And on the right-hand side, you can see a typical lot layout. There's a lot Type F, you can see, again, with the potential lot layouts, G, H, and then that, those are the different lot types. Again, these are very similar to what's been approved in Bryley Farm Phase 1. In terms of the architecture, these are exactly the same architectural character houses that were approved for Phase 1, so the colonial revival, and the Florida vernacular, and the French farmhouse. So these would be the architectural styles that would be part of Bryley Farm Phase 2 if this is approved. And then also, there's standards for outbuildings, and also, as you already have in Phase 1, there are conditions within their design guidelines which would be adopted if it's approved by the Town Commission at your November 10th meeting that prohibit these being used as like full accessory dwelling units. It restricts, they're not allowed to have a full kitchen, and also it restricts it to the use of the owner or their guests as part of those restrictions, which is similar to what you did in Phase 1 with that. The other that I didn't say, and I don't know why I missed it, is there's also another mitigation payment that the developers agreed to, and that is for transportation. They are also going to pay the town a transportation mitigation fee of $85,000 that will be paid directly to the town, and then the town could utilize that for road paving or any other kind of roadway improvements the town would want to do with it. And that would be a direct payment. It's not an impact fee payment, so you're not restricted or limited really on how you can use it to address that. And they still will be paying transportation impact fees with each of their houses coming forward for this project. So related to the design, this was reviewed by your Appearance Review Board at their October 7th meeting, and they recommended approval of the proposed design of the homes and the layout as presented, and they had no objections or concerns or conditions on Bryley Farm Phase 2. The preliminary subdivision plan, and this is the other part of your requested approval, is approve this new layout for the project. What you can see is how the lots are laid out. Kathy, do I have that, do you have that other file that I can show with the layouts? They are dedicating a significant amount of land to the town for the Oakland Nature Preserve, as well as town parks, and we have a drawing that I scribbled this morning. So as you can see on that drawing there, on the west side of the project, that's a total of about 11 acres. That will be dedicated to the town for incorporation into the Oakland Nature Park. So basically, that entire west side. And then the areas that are highlighted in blue, that's a total of a little bit over five acres, and those are being dedicated to the town for future town parks. So you can see that, and then the little red circle you see up there in the corner, that's where the lift station is located, and that will also be dedicated to the town. So there is this land dedication that would be coming, and one of the nice things you can see with the town park there on the south side, it does connect to that dedication for the Oakland Nature Preserve, so you could potentially have a nice connection there from this project over to Oakland, actually for anywhere on the side of the town over to the Oakland Nature Preserve in the future. Next, please, back to the PowerPoint, please.
Brad?
Yes, sir.
Sure. We have a retaining pond that belongs to Pulte up there.
Yes.
Just so the audience can know, but what about that road behind the lot from 93 to 105 on the west side next adjacent to the Oakland Nature Preserve? What's, what's going to, there's a connection there. Is that going to be governed and built by Pulte or?
Pulte will be constructing, yes, that retention pond in that area up there in that northwest corner of the property.
I'm talking about the vertical north to south that looks like a road.
Oh, the road, no, that would be developed by the applicant, by the developer for Bryley. That would be their construction, I think, if I'm understanding your question.
Correct.
Oh, go ahead.
That goes away.
Thank you.
I think it stays an easement, though, or for maintenance, right, yeah.
Bobby Johnson with Gemini Engineering. Yeah, so on the west side of those lots, I think he said, I think 95 through 105, that's along there to the nature preserve, there is a easement that's over top of a pipe that Pulte is currently under construction of installing. So there will be in perpetuity a easement over that pipe system for them to access and maintain it.
Okay, so when you're saying, Brad, there's going to be access to the Oakland Nature Preserve, we won't be able to go across through that easement?
No, no, it would be down on the south, the south side.
Correct.
Of the access, correct, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
About what's attached to that first park area?
Yes, sir, correct. Yes, sir.
You got a few more slides to go?
Yes, just a few more. Okay, so yeah, and that's the big highlight I do want to have on this preliminary subdivision plan is that open space in that park dedication. So this request was also reviewed by your Planning and Zoning Board at their meeting last week on October 21st, and again, your Planning and Zoning Board recommended to you all to approve this proposed amendment and preliminary subdivision plan as presented. They had no objections or conditions on this request. And then after you finish your hearing this evening, then this will come back to you all at your meeting on November 10th for you to hold your second and final hearing to either approve or not to approve this from the applicant. And then our recommendation, serving as your staff, working with Public Works and your contracted town engineer, we do find this compliant with your comprehensive plan and your land development code, and we do recommend approval as presented. And with that, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions, and the applicant's team is here if you have any, if they want to present or have any questions of them.
Okay, thanks, Brad. Bobby, you got anything you want to go over?
Yes, I think I understood, Steve was saying, it's like, right now, they stabilized a road down during construction of the Pulte pipe. So it's like, I don't recall a permanent road that's going to be, that was permitted by Pulte, so that should be taken up when they finish up construction.
Thank you. Okay, anyone on the table have any questions or concerns? Will you open it up to the public? Yes, ma'am.
One question I have, and it affects really both the projects that we're talking about today, which I know are already approved and we're just making some changes to. But my question is where we stand with our water capacity based on the approval of both of these projects? Again, I know they're already approved, but.
So I'll try to answer that. We have done extensive research and, and looking into the water capacity issue. We, we are close to no more capacity, but with this project and the fourth street, we actually still have a surplus, and that was performed by CPH just in the last couple of weeks.
Okay, that's, that's good to know. My second question, which is of a personal nature somewhat, because I live in the Pulte neighborhood, that this drainage and retention pond, which I know is not y'all, but I've heard from some of the residents in Longleaf that are part of our transition committee from Pulte that Bryley is going to be maintaining or having some relationship with that retention pond? Is that something that you all can confirm?
Part of, there is a recorded agreement between the Pulte and the landowner for where, see, Pulte is installing landscaping in there, which the Bryley HOA will be responsible for maintaining that landscaping. So there is an agreement already in place and recorded.
Okay, thank you for confirming that. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else? There you go.
Just one question, as we're redefining the wastewater money, what was it originally?
The, the original cost, Mikey, was $1.1 million was the original cost of the, of that lift station.
Which have gone down to 200.
What's the portion, correct?
The proportion, right. The, the cost is still 1.1. 500,000 was through the, the grant that the town received, and that leaves a balance of 600. And this developer with their proportionate share is paying 199,000 of that 600.
I just want to clarify, Brad, it's 193?
193, I'm sorry.
That's off the proportion of the balance.
Right, right, right. We can't, because it's a regional system, we can't make them pay for that entire system. We can only make them pay for the part that they're utilizing.
So when do we get that grant?
Last, uh, last year, right?
Your question was?
When did we receive the grant for half a million dollars?
I want to say 2022, I believe, 23. It's several years ago.
So they took the portion of the 32% of the balance of the 600. So if we don't have that grant, they would still pay 32% of 1.1?
If you didn't have that 500,000 already in pocket, right, then it would be basically.
Should have held that check in, like, after this meeting?
Well, actually, at the time that you got the grant, what your agreement said with them is was the town would pay the full cost of that improvement.
Good answer.
Right. Yeah. So it's, it's so good, your point is kind of good that you came back in, because you did some, and, and look, I know that staff and we've worked together a lot on it, so I think it's, it's going to be a great project, especially reducing it, the amount of lots. And the lot sizes, just so everybody knows, fits more within what's in the town, the historic part of town. So the lots are roughly, I think, 80 by 125 is the size of the lots, roughly. So they fit more within the character of the town. And, 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 you know, the win for us is, is obviously that. The other win is the 85,000 that the developer is giving to improve the roads. We know that with those projects with Bryley Phase 1 and 2, there's going to be traffic in there. So being able to get those funds to use as, as we need to improve, that's, that's, that's good for us. And, and the, you know, donation of the nature preserve land, which allows them to build on top of that some things that they're not allowed to build inside the property proper, such as classrooms, education facilities. I know that one of the things they want to do is an archery range and stuff like that. So overall, I think it's, I think it's, it's a decent, decent deal for us.
Tell them with the archery range that they just need to shoot.
Correct. So with that, I think we're all done up here. Is there anybody in the audience have any questions or concerns or comments that you'd like to make? We're opening it up to anybody? Oh, yes, ma'am. Come on up. Name an address, please.
Sarah Meyer, 402 East Vic Avenue. Good evening, I mostly just had, I was just curious, have some questions, hopefully you guys can give me the answers. I know that Phase 2 is a PD zoning, Brad. It's Phase 1 and B, Phase 1A and 1B also PD, or is it straight zoning?
They actually last year came in to rezone Phase 1A, 1B and Daniels Cove under 1PD. That's now called Bryley Farm Phase 1. Those were all, and basically what that PD did was establish all the design standards for Phase 1, is what that PD did.
Okay, but Phase 1 and Phase 2 are meant to be a cohesive overall development. They're going to have shared amenities, shared recreation.
It's all one project, it's all one.
Is there any issue with sort of piecemealing the development under different zonings and different developer agreements?
No, because actually the two development agreements, they basically now would mirror each other because they're adopting pretty much the same design standards for the development in both PDs. Yeah. I think it actually, where we end up now is we will better have a cohesive development because what we had with the existing development agreement under Phase 2, we had this huge missing piece that said it was there, but it wasn't there. And now it will be there.
Okay, and then with the land that's being dedicated to the nature preserve, how much of that is upland and how much of that is wetland?
I don't have the answer to that. I don't know, Bobby, the engineer can answer.
They came through, they broke it up into two separate tracks. So we're following what was previously approved. The more northern tract on the west side, which is approximately seven acres, that is a portion that has some wetland and floodplains across it. The other tract down to the southwest corner is the upland portion of the nature preserve that's being dedicated. And that is approximately 4.7 acres of a total area that's all uplands.
And I think they were shooting for two. They were hoping for two, but they got four, so that's good.
Yeah, they were hoping for 11 and we're dedicating them. 7.7.
And what I'm saying is buildable, loseable. Yeah.
Thank you.
Good questions, thanks, thanks. Anyone else? Okay, another thing I'd like to, well, we'll close the public comment. The other thing I'd like to point out too is you had mentioned about connectivity. I think somebody mentioned about connectivity to Oakland Nature Preserve. And with these roads being constructed, right now, if you were to, you could not take, and I'm golf carts, you could not take your golf cart to Oakland Nature Preserve without getting arrested. So with that, and, and.
He's right there, you know?
So, so I know Mike Parker has been, has been working on a trail connection network that comes around out of that neighborhood. And one of the park tracks that's shown is one to the south, just in front of the Christian School. That would be a great point of entry from the neighborhood to be able to get down and into the reserve. So you bypass the Oakland Avenue. So another, that's another bonus to this project.
For some who may not feel like this is a great thing for Oakland, so many years, and I know whoever's lived here for a while remembers a property with the zebras and the ostriches and how funny it was to, you know, go on the trail and see them. But this is something we're going to look back on one day and say, we're really, really proud of this project because what we would have had if we didn't push back for so many years to get this, it fits right with our character of Oakland, the type of homes all the way on this side, especially historic side. What we could have ended up with would have been five times more the amount of homes, small. I mean, someone could have got a hold of this, I'm not going to throw no cookie cutter builders out there, and that would have been awful. And we would have had a long battle and probably end up with a short end of the stick. I think we're all going to look back and be very proud of this product we all fought for and worked hard for.
Yep, you can start seeing what's happening in Phase 1. And that's what we'll end up probably continuing on with. Oh, I had one, one thing for the developer is in the, in the site plan, there was a rec center. Is there ideas or any ideas of what you're going to try to use that for?
Yeah, that center rec area off of Bryley Avenue, that's more for the, that's going to be like an amenity for the Bryley HOA owners. So that'll be solely for them. But then the other park tracks will be dedicated to the town, will be open to the public.
So similar to Oakland Parks, amenity center?
Yeah, will be for the residents of Bryley.
Thanks. Okay, with that, we need to take a vote. Okay, so we'll make a motion, anyone?
I'll make a motion to accept ordinance 2025-05.
Second?
Second, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone, ordinance 2026-06, it's the first reading of the Fourth Street Village. So we're moving to the south side of 50.
Yes, sir. As Kathy brings this up, again, Brad Quinn is with Waitrim, serving as your contracted town planner. As mayor's.
Brad, can you hold a minute?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ordinance of the Town of Oakland, Florida, adopting a First Amendment to the Development Agreement and Preliminary Subdivision Plan for the Fourth Street Village Plan Development as recorded in public records of Orange County, Florida, document number 2024-0339438, uncertain real property owned by Oakland West 50 LLC. As more particularly described herein, making findings and providing for conflicts, severability, and foreign effective date.
Thank you. Again, Brad Quinn is with Waitrim, serving as your contracted town planner. So as you said, mayor, this is for ordinance 2025-06, your first reading for the Fourth Street Village PD Amendment, First Amendment to the Development Agreement, also preliminary subdivision plan. So again, as you may recall, this property is on the southeast corner of Tub and State Road 50. The applicant is here with us, Gemini Bobby, and Oakland West 50, which is Mr. Healy. This property is about 21 acres in size. And again, what they're coming through is a PD amendment, which will include a First Amendment to the Development Agreement, design approval for the proposed buildings, and as well as their preliminary subdivision plan. Again, here's the location of the property there at the southeast corner. You can see the property there. This project, as you may recall, was approved by the Town Commission back in 2024 on ordinance 2024-04. And for the Fourth Street Village, what you see on the screen is what the plan was that was approved then by the Town Commission with the building layout as well as a development agreement. What has occurred then, the developer of this project has come in with a revised plan that has now required this PD amendment to come in. So in terms of the, this is what the new plan now looks like. And so the major changes that are occurring are first is there's a community lawn kind of gathering area that was on the original plan, that was on the southeast side of the property, that has now been moved to the northwest corner of the property, up there near the corner of 50 and Fourth Street. That relocation. Also, what you can see along the, along the State Road 50, those commercial buildings have been reoriented, have been sized differently than what was previously approved. But what is important to state here is that this readjustment that they're doing is still consistent with what the Town Commission approved back in 2024 for this project in the sense that the Town Commission required that all the commercial office, all the retail part of this project would be on the north half of this property along 50. And then the multifamily component would be on the south half of this property there towards the Florida Turnpike. So they're still maintaining that same arrangement of the location of the uses that the Town Commission had previously approved. What you also see there on the south side of the site is where the multifamily is. What was there before that multifamily was broken up, shown in separate buildings. Now what they've done is they've aggregated them together into one building, one multifamily building, building, and is what they have there. So that's the other change. The other part of this approval in the development agreement is that, like this multifamily building and three of the commercial buildings, the ones that basically parallel 50, they're larger than what your design standards require in terms of their width or in, on the multifamily, their footprint. However, you know, under the PD, this does give you the ability to approve these alternative building sizes that they're being, that they are proposing for this project. So again, the key changes are the relocation of the gathering area, the reorientation of the commercial buildings, building size adjustments, consolidation of multifamily buildings into the one building. And also one of the changes is that, as you may recall, there's that east-west internal road that basically splits the property in half. How, when this went through in 2024, the idea was that there would be a future connection of that road to the east, the property to the east, that had a previously approved PD for commercial development on that property. However, as you all are aware, the county bought that property to the east, and it's now a conservation property. So there's no ability to extend that road or that roadway to the east anymore through that conservation land. So one of the changes that's being requested is that now that that road would no longer be dedicated to the town, it would be maintained as a private roadway within the development that they would maintain and provide their, you know, primary access into the project. One of the things in the developer will go, or the applicant will go into this more with their presentation, but just, this was a big point of discussion at your planning and zoning board meeting, was access to this project. And I just want to make sure everybody is aware and clear that what's being proposed is there's one access on State Road 50, which is about midway on the property. And then there's also one access that would come off of Fourth Street, which also is about midway on the property, which you can see on the development plan. I'll let the applicant's engineer go into more detail about that, that part of it. In terms of the building designs, these are the building designs that they have submitted. This is an overall view looking from the northwest down to the southeast. That would be the corner of 50 and Fourth Street. Would kind of give you a sense of what that would look like. And then what they did is each of the buildings along the site plan, and you can see on this key sheet, it'll show what building it is, and then the renderings of what that building would look like. So for this building, this would be Building A, this is part there, there on 50. This is more renderings of what Building A would look like. This would be Building B. And this is one that would be paralleled to 50, kind of in the bottom of the horseshoe of these commercial buildings. And you can see the renderings there and more renderings here of that building type. This is now Building C. This is part on the east side of the property that fronts 50 and commercial buildings. You can see the rendering there and renderings here of those buildings. And then Commercial D, which is the other building there on the far west side of the property on 50. And the renderings there and the renderings are here or this. And then this is the next building, which is another commercial building. Rendering that and the renderings for this building. And now this is the proposed multifamily area and multifamily building, and showing you the renderings for that and proposed design. This is a four-story multifamily building. And again, that is consistent with what Town Commission approved in 2024. And it's also consistent with what's allowed in your land development code is a maximum height of four stories here in this zoning district. So this is consistent with what was previously approved in terms of the height of this building. Again, more renderings of what that building would look like. And this now goes to that community gathering area there at the northeast corner. And you can see where it's laid out with kind of like cafes and those kinds of things with the public, like public lawn that people can come gather in. More renderings of what that could look like or would look like. And also some additional renderings of that area. Actually, we have a lot of renderings of that area, some more renderings of that area. So again, your appearance review board did review these building designs at their meeting on October 7th. They did recommend approval, but they did have a condition asking the applicant to look at additional architectural detailings provided on the rear of buildings that are facing State Road 50. I will let you know, I do know the applicant has a presentation for you, and this is one of the issues that they'll address with their presentation. In terms of the preliminary subdivision plan, again, it's what we showed you before. So again, we have the commercial zones to the north and the residential to the south, which maintains that original distribution. Again, the internal road will be a privately maintained road with utility services. Commissioner Keller, as you asked before, it has been verified there is sufficient water capacity to serve this project. But also, so everyone is aware that the developer, like any developer, is still going to be required to pay for the cost to extend those utilities into their project and whatever improvements are needed to get the utilities to them. So that is a standard requirement that they would have. Also, for tree mitigation for this project, in this situation, we actually have an actual tree mitigation number where they're going to need to mitigate for 1,224 inches of trees that will be replaced, being removed. And so what will happen is when they come in with their landscaping plan, with their final engineering plan, we'll determine how much of that's being replaced. And then whatever deficit there will be, if there will be a deficit, then they will pay a tree mitigation fee to make up for that deficit on that mitigation on the trees. So again, this is the plan we already showed, the preliminary subdivision plan. An important point I'll bring out here is the square footages. Your original approval for this project had an allowance up to 150,000 square feet of retail and office. I believe it was 125,000 square feet of retail and 25,000 square feet of office. This request cuts that in half, just about. This request is now a maximum of 73,500 square feet rounded of retail and office. That would be, commercial and office, that would be on that north half of the site. I know the applicant has a proposal that they will present to you about a minimum requirement related to that, which you had, well, you have in your current development agreement. What it currently says is that the developer has to do a minimum of 40,000 square feet of that commercial area prior to the CO on the multifamily. For this revised plan, I know the developer has a proposal that they will present to you all for a similar kind of condition for this one. This has, was reviewed by your planning and zoning board at their meeting last week on October 21st. They did recommend approval, and their condition was requesting the developer to relook at their access points on State Road 50 and on Fourth Street to see if there was an opportunity to either add additional access points or revise those access points. So that was their condition. And I do know the developer has, in their presentation, will also address that condition by planning and zoning board. Again, after your hearing tonight, this will go to your meeting on November 10th for your final second reading to either approve or not approve this request. Again, serving as your staff and working with Public Works and your contracted town engineer, we do find this compliance with your comprehensive plan and your land development code, and we do recommend approval of this request. And again, I know the applicants here, and they have a short presentation. And again, I know the applicants here and they have a short presentation for the commission. Be happy to answer any questions.
Good evening. Tedrow Lounes Law, 215 North Yola Drive, Orlando, Florida. Here on behalf of the applicant, a really brief presentation, just wanted to go through a couple items that had been brought up at our last two hearings. Perfect. If you can go to the next slide, please. So at ARB, as you, that's loud, sorry. At ARB, as you heard from staff, I'm going to stand here, but I don't want that to keep screeching at me. Here, okay. What the recommendation was, was to have the back of the buildings facing State Road 50 be revised to add more architectural detailing and to provide a better interface with State Road 50. So we updated those rear elevations on the buildings, added landscape buffers to those elevations, colorized the store signage. So Brad showed you what was in the original packet that ARB had reviewed. And if you go through the next slides, please, you'll see some of those changes. So you can see the colorized signage that was added. This was previously just more blank facades, but we added notes of where those signs could go for the potential future tenants. Of course, we don't know exactly who all of those tenants are going to be, but that's a rendering of what that might look like rear-facing on the buildings. If you go to the, oop, one. All right. And this shows you again, just more architectural detailing was added to those rear facades at the request of ARB, as well as our landscaping added to the renderings. Go to the next slide. And this, these next two slides are just going to show you again what some of those elevations facing State Road 50 may look like from the building. And this gives you a corner view from Tub Street and State Road 50, shows you some of our monument signage that would be there at that hard corner, as well as some of the enhanced landscaping, and then the view shed along 50 and down Fourth Street. At P&amp;Z, we received a unanimous recommendation of approval as well. And one of the conditions that they had requested was for us to evaluate the possibility of adding more access points to the project from Fourth Street or from State Road 50. So if you go to the next slide, so on State Road 50, we're obviously constrained by, Lord help me, I don't think I can get this mic right tonight. I'm not going to touch anything. All right, on State Road 50, the minimum spacing standards are dictated by DOT. So anything that we are designing, we have to meet those spacing standards. So our first access point into our project off of 50 has to be 440 feet from that intersection. The question was, could we have a second access point? The location of the second access point has to be 440 feet from the first access point, but it also has to be 440 feet from the existing access on John's Lake adjacent to us. So we have to do spacing, taking into consideration the driveway on the adjacent property and where we're constrained with the intersection. The spacing between the intersection and the existing driveway on our adjacent property to the west would have to be 1,320 feet to meet that 440, 440, 440 requirement. We're only at 1,127 feet, so there isn't a way to space to be able to have two access points on 50. That's just the math that's dictated by DOT. So nothing that the town can do to control any different access. On 50, of course, we still have to go through permitting while we've taken the project design from being far more conceptual at the first development agreement stage than it is that we're showing you all tonight, because we really have trued it up to what can be developed there, what the market demand has shown that is best for the site, for the greatest efficiencies, a layout that's meeting all of these design standards. That's what we're showing tonight in the plan that will be attached to the DA. The next slide shows Fourth Street. So there's a couple issues with Fourth Street that we would need to take a look at. So the first is that the, any access point is going to have to be at least 245 feet from State Road 50. So the access that we're showing is today at 245 feet from that intersection. It also lines up with where a potential future access could be if the parcel across the street ever gets developed, because you want to take a look at that. At the last hearing, it was brought up by some folks who live across the street that they had concerns about their driveways and whether those are going to conflict with our driveways. And it's a bit hard to tell on some of those plans, but you can see that the big arrow on the left side of the picture to the right of the screen, the big arrow shows you where our current access point is. And those two smaller red arrows beneath it as you go south down fourth are where their existing driveways are. So we didn't line it up so that they are pulling out directly when everybody would be pulling out from our site, which we think is a better design than having it directly next to any of their existing driveways, so as to not create any issues for them or their historical access onto fourth. But also, I mean, the 245 feet is again, a minimum spacing requirement from the intersection that we had to meet. In looking at whether another access point could be put further south from the intersection into our project, that second access point would have to be another 245 feet from the first access point. So you'll see what's marked on there. It says 197 from where our current access is, and that's where it's the beginning of the overpass. If you look at the image I have, looking down fourth, that's right when you get to what's called the beginning of the overpass, and you can see that it curves. So we can't have another access point for two reasons. One, the minimum 245-foot spacing requirement from our existing current access can't be met since that overpass starts 197 feet from our first access point. And the second reason is that it's a site triangle issue, which is really just comes down to a line of sight visibility and a safety concern. So if folks were pulling out at a second access point, 245 feet from the first access point, they would be pulling out right at that curve, basically, which isn't safe, right? Because then you have cars pulling out and you can't see cars coming around the curve towards you, and then the cars coming around the curve don't have time to stop, don't have adequate time to stop. That's, the engineers took a look at it again. We talked with our traffic engineer and they said, based on spacing standards, based on the existing starting point of where that overpass is, and the line of sight issue with the curvature of the road, there is no way to add a second access point there. Wouldn't be an issue for us if, you know, no sweat, if we needed to add one, it's just we physically can't and the design wouldn't allow us to have another one. And I think this was touched on briefly, but the next slide, we'll talk a little bit about the traffic study trip generation. I'm certainly not going to read all the numbers on, on that table, but we had our trip generation table that was put into our last development, that was incorporated into our last development agreement and reviewed as part of that, updated to account for the changes. So initially, the DA had said we were going to have 25,000 square feet of office, 125,000 square feet of retail, 110 hotel rooms and 190 multifamily units. What we've taken it to in the plan shown for you tonight is 73,516 square feet of commercial and office uses and 190 multifamily units. So that is a reduction of intensity of uses that are being proposed, but also that reduces any net new trips being generated by 42% from what we had previously looked at. So tonight is just a further significant reduction in the intensity of the development itself, as well as the number of cars that could be generated by the development. So we just wanted to make sure that we had those numbers updated, because there were some questions last time about, well, what would the traffic studies say today? So we had our traffic study updated and we sent that memo over to Brad prior to the hearing. That might be, and that's it. So if you have any questions, more than happy to answer them. I do want to read, though, the condition that Brad had mentioned. One of the, what the original development agreement said was development of the subject property, and this is about the commercial component. It said, "Development of the subject property may be in a single phase or multiple phases based on future market demand." And in no case will it be developed, any phase that cannot, along with previous phases, stand alone as an independent project. So essentially, it allowed for market demand to dictate how much we were going to put in at what, at what time for commercial and multifamily. It did set a 40,000-square-foot minimum overall. And I remember that conversation, we had a long conversation about this of, we want to make sure you actually do some commercial. We just don't want this to be get your foot in the door with multifamily and we have a vacant lot fronting State Road 50 that you've never actually developed with any commercial uses. And so now we have come back and the first phase that we know we are developing prior to getting a CO on our multifamily would be that 30,000-square-foot northwest corner that has our community gathering, event lawn area and retail, which will have some cool concepts like micro restaurants. So think the Crooked Can vendors on steroids. They each have their own actual built-out physical structure that they will take over. And then there's an event lawn in the middle of that with a community gathering space, which would be great for families and folks who want to spend a little time outside and try some different, hopefully local vendors that would use those spaces, in addition to other retail and office component that we could have there. So we are going to do that first 30,000 square feet. We know we have committed that. It's going to be 73,516 is what we're showing on the plan. But we will have language that will commit us, again, to doing that first phase of the plan before we CO our multifamily. So I had sent this language over to staff earlier as a suggestion, but the suggestion could be to add to our development agreement or requirement that dark shell construction of a minimum of 30,000 square feet of commercial uses, which can include the square feet associated with our event venue, i.e. the community food hall, outdoor lawn space, must be completed prior to a CO being issued for the multifamily building on the subject property. That ensures that we have that buildout done prior to any residents being able to move into the multifamily building. I think that gives some of the guarantees that we had talked about with the first DA, but actually puts some teeth behind it and says that, yes, we are going to do it, we are, we are ready to do it today. And now, sorry to question.
Thank you. That's right. Put it in the agreement, so it's got.
That's right.
You can't come back and say, whoa, we never agreed to that. Oh, yeah, okay. Anybody have any questions on the table?
Hello. A couple of things. I, I am happy to see the commercial space moved to the 50 part of the project. That was something when I was on planning and zoning that I had expressed concern about. I think it's better to have the residential pushed back. I think the people that live there will be appreciating that as well. So I appreciate that change. Just in the, I agree with the ARB that we need to have something different along 50, and I'm glad to see changes. I don't love all that signage along 50. I don't know what we have as far as signage codes, you know, committed to memory, but like, I prefer like to see a monument at the entrance, maybe where it has the listing, a small monument, as opposed to all of that signage down 50. It just seems like a lot to me.
Commissioner Keller, I could tell you, we received that late this afternoon, so we haven't checked to see if it would meet the allocation for signage, so we can do that calculation for the next hearing.
But again, I agree with ARB that that visual on 50 does need to be good. I just don't need, think it needs to be a landing strip of signs down 50. So maybe another look at that and obviously, our team needs to take a look at that.
Sure.
I am a little concerned about congestion of residents coming out of those entrances. I understand the constraints to that. It looks like your traffic study says it's not an issue, but just on the record, it does seem a little bit like a lot with 190 residential units. And again, obviously not all 190 residents or plus, you know, are going to be leaving, but just looks a little constrained of that. So I don't know if there's, there's any way to revisit that. I mean, I understand your constraints, it makes it almost impossible.
Yeah, we had the traffic engineer help us evaluate our stacking length internal on the site to make sure that we had adequate stacking length for cars coming in and out of our property. And then again, just given the net new trips that are generated from the project on an AM and PM peak hour basis, the roadways are going to continue to operate at their adopted levels of service, so we're not creating any deficiencies. There weren't any issues, of course, if there needs to be a reevaluation at the time of full buildout, because we have to come back, right? If we're going to do full buildout in 2027, if the conditions change, we don't get to say, but we showed the town a site plan in 2025 and that's what we're doing and we don't have to do anything else, right? If DOT says, nope, you have to do this, or if the town says, nope, you have to do this, we have to change it at that time and we have to update our traffic analysis, you know, when we come back at that time, too. So this is going to be a work in progress. If something needs to change based on changed conditions, we're responsible for that and we fully understand that's a risk of development, that not everything looks exactly the same once you get to those final.
I could see us also having a turn lane into that development coming, going east on 50, you know, coming in there, too, once you build out the rest of that commercial space.
Yeah.
As a possible thing. Um, let me see, what else? Oh, I did want to say, I appreciate the description of the event space, something similar to Crooked Can, because I know I had some questions about that. I know some residents I talked to before the meeting, that it's, it's not a town event space, that this is a private event space as part of the development. And I think it's important just to reiterate that information, make sure everybody understands. I think it's, it's a great addition to that property and hopefully will be a good draw for residents to attend, whether it's, you know, music menus, and I'm sure all that will be obviously something to be consideration to because of the residents that live.
Absolutely. And it was called an event venue, and I think the way it was designed before probably lent itself to be more of a true event venue. But the way we have it designed now is that U shape encloses where the lawn is. And that lawn is going to be in the center of where each of those, you know, micro restaurants or retail spaces would be. It's really just outdoor seating, you know, and to have TVs, you can think about, you know, football on Sundays, folks being able to come out, just like on that little outdoor space at the Crooked Can in Winter Garden. It's always packed, there's never enough seats. Everybody wants to sit outside when the weather is nice, but we'll have some coverage for when the weather's not so nice. But that's not going to be, you know, concerts and keeping folks up all night. We're still subject to the same requirements for special events, that if we had a special event, we have to pull permits with the town for that. You know, there's noise ordinances that are still in control every other day of the year that we operate any of these uses. So fully aware of that, and I appreciate you bringing that up, because I don't think I did a good enough job explaining that this is not a concert venue, this is not supposed to be a spring break, you know, party venue. This is a community gathering space is what we have envisioned it as for families to come out to and enjoy. And that's all I have, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Keller.
I like what I see, much better than before. I know that I've always talked about, you know, if we're going to go four stories closer to the Turnpike and not on Colonial, and before you had, you know, three-story, two-story, one-story, and just having the commercial, just one story on 50, I like it. I like the fact that you have the lawn enclosed area facing the, the rest of the retail. I have a question for, and this is maybe part of if we had the language or not, I remember when Rick Paul and ex-commissioner was here, would mention the quota of square feet for restaurants. I don't know if you guys addressed that here, is there, after they dropped down to 73,000 square feet, how much of that's going to be actual restaurants versus just commercial?
I don't think, we don't have a breakdown specifically of what a minimum or maximum restaurant component of 73,516 square feet would be.
Okay. Do you have approximate square feet of the commercial where the venue, the restaurant venue lawn is at? Because if you have 30,000 square feet as your request for a minimum, is that only one building before the multifamily?
That's what we're calling the community event area. That's about 10,000 square feet of the 30.
Okay. And then the buildings that are east of it, what's the approximate square feet? Because I don't see it here, or maybe I missed it, but just, so I can know what the 30,000 would include before the multifamily actually gets to the CO.
Sure. So you'll, there's three areas. The one is, what I told you, is a U-shaped building, that's about 10,000. Then you have commercial buildings A and commercial buildings B, and those are again the closest to the northwest corner. Commercial A is the one that's oriented on its side, and that is.
Got it.
8,077 square feet.
Okay, so we could get at least the event venue, those two small buildings with that stage, plus these two other buildings, B and A, that are east of it, that would give us at least a footprint of half of the commercial before we get to the, to the multifamily.
So we're committing to a minimum of the 30,000 square feet being done prior to CO of the multifamily.
Okay. I got one more, a few more things. So again, thank you very much, ARB. You guys did a great job in addressing this. I'm with Commissioner Keller on the too much signage down 50 and more of a central sign on the entrance tower with multiple businesses as they come in and out. I like what you guys did with the multifamily, that you guys actually added some brick. And I know that, I know Franco Scal is on the audience right now and how much I drilled them with a brick on his building, because that's our signature style of the town of Oakland, from racetrack all the way down to the future building that Franco's putting on. So I like the brick you guys put in the multifamily, but you did not put any brick, or I saw very minimum, on the commercial buildings. I would like to see brick on the commercial buildings, because that's part of our signature style of Oakland as people drive down Colonial. And I don't know how we can work around or what you guys have planned, this is a different subject. On the multifamily, that courtyard you have there with a pool. On the multifamily, that courtyard you have there with a pool, those courtyards and those type of multifamily tend to also become, um, venues in itself within the multifamily, with a pool and activities and sound. And what you guys did on the restaurant venue on Colonial, you guys faced, as you mentioned earlier, the lawn encloses towards the retail and away from the residence. So I'm considering, I'm considering and concerned for the residents who live across the street will be seeing that open courtyard and whatever activities the multifamily decides to throw throughout the year and years to come. Is there a way that you guys can look into flipping it around and have that courtyard facing the inside where the, you know, wetlands are at? And not have the residents have to one day, you know, call and complain about whatever venues of multifamily will be having there?
Let me get some details and, and we'll come back like on second reading with answers to the concerns that folks have brought up tonight. And that is one that we can address, the orientation of the building and what exactly that common area is going to be used for. Because there could be some buffering that's already contemplated, you know, if it's an indoor clubhouse that might be in that area that buffers and the pools on the interior. So let me just get some more.
I, I know that those type of buffering that you're saying landscaping will not bring down the STC ratings of sound.
Sure.
So whatever the multifamily creates there as an ambiance for their renters will carry over across Fourth Street to the residents as noise. So if it's facing the opposite way with a four-story building, that will drop the, the rating of the sound back rating low. I'm, I'm just something for you guys to consider. It won't cost much for the builder to build it. It's the same footprint, missing the other way.
Anybody else?
Be real quick. I don't want to be repetitive. My biggest concern is really the traffic going in and out. And I know I saw the residents that is going to, and I'm not a fan of DOT when it comes to their, um, you know, their standards. I mean, you know, we have the same issue on the Remington Road. So I just, you know, my ask is please do your best as relates to everything I would just said, especially, you know, they've been living there for decades and, and it's been a quiet area. You know, I'm just really concerned that we don't, of course, we want the commercial, of course, we want the development, but we don't want to disrupt what's there. I'm, I'm pleased with the entries that is, you know, that you shared as far as the differences, as far as they're not backing out. But still, it's going to really impact them, just like Commissioner Raymond said about the, you know, how, just the family life, how it affects them. So but the traffic, please, you know, please let's not lean on the DOT standards. Let's try to do our best.
No, and I completely understood when I heard those concerns last time. And listen, I've, I've got little kids myself. So the kids playing in the yard, concerns about traffic, completely get it. And so that's why our team, I was like, we got to get a visual so we see where, where actually is our driveway? And where are their driveways? Are we right across from theirs? You know, and ours is north of the existing ones. Which I think is good from a traffic distribution standpoint, the majority of our traffic's going to leave and go, you know, fifty. When, when you leave in the morning, when you leave from the site. So it's really not going to be a lot of, of the traffic going south past their properties. So my hope is with our driveway being north of their driveways, I can't say we're not putting more cars on the road.
Okay, okay, okay. It's like.
We are, right?
Right, pretty much.
Could be more cars on the road with anything getting developed here, because it's going from vacant to something, right? I understand that is, that will be an impact. But I, I hopefully the fact that we're cutting down those cars by forty-two percent, I think is a, is a big win. But also I think having our driveway north of their driveways, so it's, it's not all coming right past them every morning with our multifamily exiting and leaving, you know, it's, it's taking everything and getting it past their driveways. I'm hoping that that's an optimal design in their eyes, but it's something that our team has looked at. We've tried to see how you make it work and we've got a lot of constraints. But again, we'll, we'll, we'll take that back and, and talk about.
I know we can't predict the future, but we know once you build, the side is going to get, so.
Yeah.
Let's make sure that, keep our lens on the entire project, not saying to control it, but at the same thing. You know, we want to make sure, keep them safe and.
Yeah, understood.
Considered. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Just, uh, Mike, did you have anything?
I just wanted to add, I had eight bullet points and thank you, thank you, and thank you. You covered them. One of my, my biggest one was the orientation of that multifamily building though. And, and a way to try to help out those folks that are on the other side of Fourth Street, because that is a, a, a big problem. That's been there, wrong, anything we can do to get it right for them. And that's it.
Thank you. I'll, um, I like the, I like the access points. I think too much screws up things where you're not, you don't have control on how you come in. So, uh, the access point on Fourth Street, it kind of goes with our plan where we had this spine that ran off of the fifty. So any future development to the west, um, that would connect fine. Because when you looked at your overall map and showed that property across to the west, it continues and carries on out, uh, to, uh, those developments that are going to the way, yeah, where your big arrow is. It runs down that, but it continues that spine that we can't carry to the east because of the, uh, property that was bought by Orange County. So that helps traffic off of fifty if you're trying to commute between, uh, a commercial space and you're trying to run to the west to another commercial space. It, it helps out. You're not having those dangerous, uh, uh, turning movements off of fifty. And, um, I, I am, I'm, I'm happy with the seventy-five thousand square foot total, plus or minus. And because I think if you get too much, if you did a hundred thousand, you run a very big risk of vacancies that happen there. And that's just something that you really don't want to have, um, on fifty especially. So I, I think, um, the way it's laid out with the building facing fifty, and, and I'm sure some of it will shift a little bit here or there. But, uh, all in all, a lot better than that original preliminary plan that came in and keeping that residential more to the, uh, to the Turnpike. But, um, I did, I did ask a couple of questions, um, previous, and, and I think one of those were, and I, and we brought this up, but, um, you know, will there be a left-hand turn lane off of Fourth? And the answer was that was the traffic study didn't warrant that. But I'm sure as development increases to the west, there may be, uh, a, a need for something like that, um, as that happened. All in all, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, um, with that, it is, it is a public hearing, so, um, we'll open it up to anyone in the public that has a comment, uh, about this, uh, project. Does have any takers today? And you got three minutes. Three minutes, ma'am. Come on up. Good evening.
Just talk about, I'd like to thank people for listening to me as far as trying to get the driveway moved. And secondary driveway, obviously, I didn't even think about that, that bridge that's coming across there. I really appreciate it. And turning the building around makes a lot more sense, dude, because then that comes up. But my main, other main concern is, is Fourth Street, that entrance there, that two hundred, that two hundred and fifty, how are we going to maintain this road? Because when the buildings start coming in, they're going to have to bring in all their equipment. That's going to be your next biggest problem, because I mean, it's the county maintained road. Obviously, the county doesn't maintain it. Okay? That's going to be, all those heavy trucks coming in, dropping off all their equipment. And they've got to come in help some way. But once they start coming in, it's really, I mean, that's like what. So we've got to stop that as well.
Please make sure you're in the microphone. I'm sorry, because if people are watching from home, they can't hear you.
I'm sorry.
No worries. Thank you.
But yeah, the equipment's going to tear up the road. Okay, that's, that's going to be a given. But who's going to find out how we either maintain that road or how get the county to maintain it? How are we going to get it fixed once this complex is done? Completely done. You've got people moving in. Now you've got a road that's just falling apart because of all the heavy equipment coming in. Because the concrete trucks have got to come in, all the beaming trucks have got to come in, the dirt's got to come in, and the dirt's got to go out. And then you've got your loaders and your, all that stuff. So I'm just, we've done one step. Now we have just got to maintain the road right there. I'm happy with what you guys have done. I, I appreciate you guys listening to me the other night. I, I, I couldn't be happier. So it's kind of a win-win for both of us. Now, I mean, it's going to come in, it is, but, you know, that's just my main concern is that road right there. And.
And we're glad it's gone both ways for both of us. It really does mean a lot to us that, that, that it's right for you guys, too. So, and you're right, the next step, which there's probably not an answer tonight.
Right.
We know that something's going to have to give with, with the coming in also.
Right. Also, um, I don't know if you guys are planning on putting foliage all the way down through there? Or are we going to put a wall and foliage? Because to me, putting a wall is kind of, you can still, it still echoes. I think more foliage would be more of a sound barrier.
Landscaping.
I think they should have to come back with that, but, uh, to me, it looks like it's, it's landscape that runs down the.
Mayor, I can confirm that on their preliminary plans, it does show landscaping through there, not a wall.
Awesome. Good. Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay. Oh, yeah. Just in time.
Uh, Sarah Meyer, four oh two East Vic Avenue. On the architectural enhancements that were done along fifty, I just, I couldn't really get a good glimpse of them. I don't know if we can put them back up. I think it looks very nice. I just, I wish that there was more glass to make it look like a storefront. I know it's not going to function as a storefront. It's back house. There's going to be storage. But if the landscaping is really going to be as tall and as dense as they show it, maybe the glass, either. But it was just out there that I thought would add better, because it is basically the front door, more historic downtown. And I agree that the signage is a bit much with all the different colors and fonts, but if it was more unified and cohesive with colors and sizing and font, I think it's nice, because then it would draw people in in the commercial area and know what's in there before they make a turn. I, I think signage is helpful, but I just think it looks, uh, more unified. As far as parking, is there any gating in the apartment area? It's gated?
Yeah, there's a gate, I think, shown.
So is the event or restaurant area, does it have a different parking ratio than like the commercial? It's, it's parked at the same rate?
Yeah.
Because I would think that would be a higher.
Yeah, I think when I read into the report, and correct me if I'm wrong, Brad, but, uh, you know, the, the round the apartment inside the gated area is, is for residents of that, of that complex. But outside the gated area, you'll see there's some, uh, parking that is kind of cross-access type parking that would go towards the parking counts of the, uh, commercial as well.
Right. And I know that the, there looks like there's plenty of parking for the commercial.
Yeah.
You know.
More than some places. Yeah.
And Jason, you think that as a, like you're going to drive there, park in the commercial area and then have to walk to the event space? Which maybe that works fine if.
Yeah. I don't think there's anything.
Was it a certain hour? I don't.
And I don't think there's anything wrong with that, parking and walking. I, I, I'd love to have a walkable type center here.
Sure. And how much of the parking would be included with the.
So if, Brad, I don't know if you can put that back up, just so, uh, we can kind of carve it out and, and please tell me if I'm, if I'm mistaken here. So where the access road, the road that runs out onto fifty? So kind of if you took that rectangle from that access road or that road that runs out onto, ties into fifty to the west, that's the areas that were, that would be, that would have to be constructed prior to the CO of the, uh, multifamily. Yeah, so parking is by building B and building A and all that that runs in front of the multifamily, uh, would have to be constructed. So really, all you have, you're left with is that little block that's to the east is, is what you're there. And, you know, autonomy kicks in. They might go ahead and just start that, too.
Mayor, to help with that answer, so what would actually happen when they come in with that initial part? And it's on their plan. They would have to provide the parking at a ratio of four point four spaces per a thousand square feet of what they're constructing. So we would do that calculation when they would come in with that thirty thousand square feet to ensure that they have that sufficient.
From the building point, from that stance, what our mayor's saying makes a lot of sense. If you're going to outsource and bring in contractors and do a full parking lot, like the buildings on A and B, plus south of that venue along that road that's going to connect to, um, the Orange County property, whatever that is. So that makes a lot more sense. And I know building part, you know, they would like to do more than less, because it's more economical to build it that way.
And that would be absolutely fine, because that calculation would just be the minimum they would have to provide, so they could absolutely provide more.
And I think also what we got to make sure is in the, in the revised development agreement, when it comes back to us, that we have that stipulated in there. I know right now it's, I don't believe it's there or it's going in there. Uh, and also the construction of those buildings to a old dark shell, which is basically ready for a tenant build out, is what we would do. So you'd have parking and landscaping, everything on the facade would look like the facade, just waiting for someone to build out the interior space. Typical.
And Sarah, to, uh, just to bring up the signage, I mean, you're right, it is, is pretty busy. It looks pretty busy. But yet, we do need signage for the, um, future restaurants or commercials so they can average on fifty. But we don't want it to be ice. I mean, right now it looks like a Formula One car right now, right? I mean, it's full of different colors, but if we pick a color, right? Black, white, I don't know, a solid color, even if they all have a different sign, same color, still addresses the fact that they're there. But it doesn't look like a jumping ice sore in Colonial as they enter our town. Thank, thank you for that, and we should think about that, Brad, or, you know, the rest of the team, or what you guys can do.
Yeah, absolutely.
The access point that's sort of in the middle of fifty is a ride-in, ride-out.
Yep.
I think, is there a signal going in at Catherine Ross? Or I just feel like there's going to be a lot of U-turn at fifty.
If I'm not mistaken, Mike, Catherine Ross is a ride-in, ride-out as well. There's, there's no cross-access to get to the other side of fifty, so you'd have to turn around at Tractor Supply and then come back that way, which is star, pull the U-turn.
Turn, but otherwise everyone's going.
Well.
Traffic's going to go to Clermont, but if you live north of fifty in Oakland or east, everyone's going to be going.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Where they're turning in at Fourth Street and coming in where there is a light.
Top and fourth.
Someone else is going out there, too. I was looking for a way to distribute the traffic. There's room for twelve cars to sit out in the left turn lane.
No left turn lane off of Fourth onto fifty. It, it's going, it.
Successful, it's going to be jammed and it's going to be a problem.
If it's successful, it is, but then you got to hope that kind of what you see down the street, just right, the development down there, it's the same type of setup and you're not having cars that are. Uh, just the, the development, just, just directly, just on the other side of the Oakland line. Where the, uh, where the Foxtail is and.
I'm going to ask people.
Domino's and Schmidt Construction and stuff like that. Yeah. And there's some. And there's some medical, yeah, because you probably have to go out and then pull the U-turn to come out. Yeah. Yeah.
Eventually FDOT is going to do a study. Once everything's built out, they won't. I know because I sit in the board, they will not get ahead of themselves financially and with time. But eventually, when it's all built out, they'll definitely start putting studies into possibly adding another light or more. But they, we're early, very early right now in that. F dot.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Um, anyone else? Okay, so we'll close that public hearing and bring it back here, guys. Uh, anybody would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to accept ordinance two zero two six dash zero six. Yeah, well, I got to add.
Have to, yeah, we got a lot of stuff.
Yeah, we got to add a lot of stuff. It's with a proposed amendment, um, to, well, they're going to have to bring it back.
The review of the front storefront.
Storefront signage, additional brick.
Yep.
Considering the, the situation of the multifamily as it sits right now with a courtyard and amenities facing the Everglades or the pond. What else do we have here?
Throwing in the, uh, square footage, is there anything?
Yeah, they're throwing this thirty thousand square feet of the developer's agreement there. And considering they're revisiting the parking spaces for that venue when it does get released before the CEO of the multifamily.
Entranceways in and out.
And retry looking into the entrances in and out. I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. All right. Moving on to uh, the next ordinance, which is ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh seven. And um, Steve, your team, your team wanna leave, Steve, are you good? Your team wanna leave, are you, okay?
This this will be your cue.
It'll be your cue if you wanna get out, I'm giving you a chance, give me a chance to get out.
You'll have to stay, no matter what, you got five seconds.
I guess, I guess the thing is, see you guys.
And gal. Thank you, guys. Oh. Things you gotta put in layman's terms. My one, leaving.
Okay.
Wait a minute, is she allowed to leave? Going in the back, all right. All right, so uh, moving on to the next ordinance, ordinance twenty twenty-five oh seven, this is the second reading of the ordinance to approve amendments to the town charter.
An ordinance of the town of Oakland, Florida, proposing amendments to the Oakland Town Charter, providing for referenda on the proposed charter amendments, providing the ballot titles and ballot summaries for the referenda, providing for direction to the town clerk in coordination with the Orange County Supervisor of Elections, and providing for findings, conflicts, severability, and an effective date.
Thank you, Kathy, anyone presenting this one? No? So this is kind of what we talked about last meeting, which is essentially, I don't believe there was any changes, I think everybody was in agreement that what was on the um, charter ballot, and uh, thank you again to those members who were on the charter committee, who may be here tonight, I think I see two back there, three, yes, thank you. Uh, so um, again, this goes on to the March ballot, and you can select yes or no, if you agree or disagree with what's going on on that on that uh, charter. Any questions or concerns, and open it up to anybody in the audience that may have some questions or concerns that should as a ordinance? Okay, hearing done, we'll shut it down and bring it back here, any comments or questions or concerns? No, all right, let's go entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero seven, the second reading of ordinance to approve amendments to the town charter to be placed on the twenty twenty-six general election ballot.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, that was easy, all right, so look for that. All right, next is public forum. Come on, Jill, we know you're here for something. I'm glad, I've heard, I've heard rumors, word on the street, Jill.
Jill Cox, three oh one North Walker Street. Last year was our first annual golf cart parade, and this year, and last year, but this year, it was like, we cannot keep competing against Winter Garden. Their golf cart parade would've been the same time as our Santa Town Festival, which we did it last year on. And it's, there's a lot of people in Oakland that do the Winter Garden Golf Cart Parade. And so, this year, we are gonna do it December thirteenth, following Saturday. It's going to have no um, registration fee. Registration fee for Winter Garden is a hundred dollars, we have none of that, we do have prizes. Um, Santa is going to be at the end of it, thank you, Santa. And um, what we're gonna do is I'm gonna get some banners to put around, um, I have flyers for everybody. But um, the big thing is, we're just gonna gather at Spear Park, line up around Spear Park, the, the chief, no. Um, the map will probably be the same as last year, where we only cross Oakland Avenue twice. We go over Tubbs Street, and then we go down Hall, and then we come back on Hallard, because we can't get to Hall Island. Our speed limit is too high, but anyways, um.
You've been forewarned, chief, you can't arrest any of them.
But uh, I'm excited, I hope, I've been talking to people in Winter Garden, you know, they're gonna be, their golf carts, you know, dressed up, we're gonna have prizes. And hopefully, we'll get, we had ten last year, but one of ours caught on fire. And I've talked to them and said that the fire department will have to clear their golf cart, Kathy and Gary. And um, but anyways, so, so here's the flyers for you guys, and any any golf cart people I run into, I tell them about our parade.
What's the starting time and ending time?
It's minutes, things do it, yeah.
Every part of town was hit.
Well, if it's gonna be more, it will be a little bit longer time-wise, so.
Have fun. Jill, thank you very much for spearheading this again. Do you have any partners in crime? Meredith Roster, okay.
Can we make sure that this gets communicated through the town channels of communication?
Yes, we can do that.
You.
And Jill, we wanna start lining up at five o'clock, or have a five o'clock, okay, that's what I thought. Yeah, yeah, I heard.
Yeah, and and that's kinda compared to Winter Garden.
Great, thanks, Jill, thanks for doing it again, appreciate it, we love these town initiatives, town-led initiatives, thank you. Anyone else have anything that anybody would like to speak about, yes, sir?
Uh, yeah, James People, one zero one six Hall Island Drive, this is a quick one for Mike, I think. I wonder if you could find your way to put a centerline stripe on Hall Island Drive from Gideon till at least past the Hindu Temple. Uh, cars seem to have a real problem with the corner on Hall Island Drive with understanding that it's actually a two-lane road. And I've been pushed off, and the garbage trucks are the worst offenders, but if you could just put a centerline stripe, people would know which side of the road belongs to who, appreciate it.
We'll be happy to look into it, yeah.
All right, thanks, it's all you want is a stripe? All right, anyone else? Okay, so we'll close the public forum and bring it back here to our town leader, Elise.
Okay, so I just, I know it's been a long meeting, but I have a couple things, um, state of the town, so that was our first effort with the videos and and the presentation. Um, we had ninety-five guests attend, which I thought was really good. Um, I felt it was a nice mix of elected officials, community partners, and residents, there were a bunch of the residents that are in here that attended, so that was great to see, um, kind of that mix, mix of folks. We should have kind of a recap from the event, we didn't video the full event, um, but we should have some kind of a short recap that we'll be putting on social media, um, if people wanna see the full event, they can attend in person. That's 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 our.
True.
Amendment here.
How you feel about that, Elise?
Um, Kelly Sims, I just wanted to give a shout out to her, she did a fantastic job on our social media with Florida City Week last week. Um, she had a lot of postings going on, um, I was really, really pleased with her efforts. Just wanted to recognize her. Pumpkin Glow, Pumpkin Patch, so that was Friday, Saturday night, they had over twenty-six hundred guests attend, I just got that number from Nicole. I think I mentioned at the last meeting, we had a friendly departmental competition, it's still ongoing, if you go to Facebook, you can vote on on the different teams. Um, for the pumpkins, the voting is open through the thirty-first, um, but we were able to come up with nineteen pumpkins on our own um, for the whole group, so I thought that was fantastic. Second, I'm trying to get these in order, so coming up, November twenty-second is gonna be our Trees of Season um, exhibit, and that, there's no more room for trees for for people to um, sponsor trees, all the spots are filled, but the exhibit itself will be November twenty-second through January third, and then Santa's Lane is December sixth. So those are things to look forward to. Gabby and I um, interviewed for a human resources manager with payroll position. We have offered the position to somebody, she accepted, she's now undergoing her background screening. Um, so hopefully, we will be able to make an official announcement in the near future on that one. Um, we also have an opening for utility billing clerk um, at our front desk, that one, they're also starting to interview. Um, that one, we have pulled, so it's no longer open, but they're interviewing, and hopefully, they'll make a decision in the near future on that one. And then, John L is working on reviewing applications for Public Works Admin Assistant as well, and hopefully, they'll start interviewing for that position um, in the near future, so we're headed in the right track, and Gabby's filling in for payroll, and I'm helping out with HR, so so um, hopefully, we get somebody in to help us soon.
Great, all right, a lot going on, thank you. Uh, speaking of Gabby, anything, everything tonight?
Nope.
Hey, easy, Mr. Parker?
I'm just glad to be, still be part of the team.
Mike?
I've got an idea for you though, Mike, you know, since we got that admin position open, and you're transitioning the end of the year, you maybe, you know. I don't think so. Trying to help.
All right, John L, what have you got going on?
I'll say something to sound, I'm just glad for Mike to still be a part of the team.
Yeah. Hey, Brad, been busy, haven't you, Brad?
Hey, just real quick, just a couple updates on some things that are going on, um, one thing that I don't know, we've talked about, the three O T, three O two East Oakland, the Spanish House here on the corner. Um, there's a doctor that's buying that property and that house, and he's gonna renovate it and open his doctor's office there, so we're we're pretty excited about that.
Oh, nice.
Um, he's a specialty doctor, and and he's gonna do some really nice stuff there, and he's gonna maintain the house, he's just gonna renovate it. So that, I just want everybody to know that, and he should be coming in with permitting here pretty soon. I'm also just, Oakland Exchange Office Complex, they're behind racetrack, they're moving forward with their development, their their shelves are going up right now. Um, we're getting calls pretty frequently from folks, getting ready to come in with their build-out permits there, so that that project should finish out pretty quickly. And I'll just give you a heads up, um, Bayview at Johns Lake, um, I do understand that property is about to be sold. The new owner will be coming forward with a PD amendment for that property, which will be noticed and go through the public hearings with the town when that happens. Um, I do know they're gonna maintain it as twenty units, but they may be doing some adjustments primarily related to the design. So that once, once that happens, when we get the application, they'll start going through that process, that probably won't be till after next year, though.
Design on houses or?
Design on houses primarily, design on.
How far is this develop, site development?
They're they're pretty far along, so they they.
Change that pretty much.
Yeah, I think their plan is to try to get final site sign-off by the end of this year.
Okay, all right.
That's just a couple updates for you.
They're done, thank you, Brad. Chief, you're sitting back there by yourself?
Uh, yes, I am, and I enjoy it. Uh, just a couple quick things, uh, we we are going through some staffing changes, possibly, we have two people that have conditional offers with other agencies, maybe moving on to bigger agencies. Uh, we are processing, we have, I think, thirteen applicants that that have responded to the posting. We're processing, I think, six of them were qualified, so we're gonna, we're going through all that. More importantly, you cannot be arrested for driving a golf cart on Oakland Avenue. But uh, we're we're. I've been uh, talking with Elise, and we're going through not only some philosophy changes with the police department, but also some optics, changes in the way that we look, we uh, we are getting new cars, as you talked about in the state of the town. We got one brand-new car from the state of Florida, and then we have another one coming to replace one that was crashed. And we're we're gonna start transitioning the look of the cars, how they look, we're gonna go away from the current design and uh, get something new to go along with, just a totally new philosophy in the police department, completely rebuilding the team. And uh, that's what we're we're trying to work on. And uh, finally, you cannot be arrested for driving a golf cart.
You gotta have little golf carts with on your new car?
Yeah, all right, thanks, chief, and again, um, it is a big deal that we got the grant for the new um, police uh, vehicle, it's a, the truck, right?
The one that the state of Florida's buying is is an F-one-fifty, and then we have a brand-new Explorer on the way to replace the one that was totaled.
Right, so two new police cars, that's great for our little little town here, so yeah, thank you very much, and the side-by-side, ready to go?
Side-by-side is done, we are waiting on the decals to be attached, and then Orange County has to sign off on the uh, the invoice for the upfitting of the like, with the license signs, but it's here, it's in, it's over at the shop.
You guys can lead the golf cart parade.
And we will, they can, I will be out of the country, uh, but somebody else can, and we also got another grant for a drone.
Oh, great.
I talked about, so we'll be getting that drone here in the next nine months or so.
Thank you. Uh, Kathy, anything from you?
Tuesday, November eleventh will be our next meeting, and it will be our only, oh, yes, you're right, I'm sorry, it is November tenth. That is our only meeting for next month, and it is on a Monday.
Okay, thank you. All right, Ms. Keller.
Uh, just quickly, I thought the state of the town was really nice, I thought the staff videos were awesome to add, I won't steal all your thunder, but um, but I thought it was a great, it was lovely to see a great turnout from the community, I thought it was also nice that uh, Mayor Demings uh, took the time to come, so I thought it was a great event, and look forward to more of those. So professionally, I was like, we looked really big time, so it was awesome. Um, and again, I wanna echo, Kelly is doing a great job, chief, please relay to her that everything she's doing is is really great, I appreciate that. So, um, that's it for me.
Thank you. Ms. McMon.
Yeah, I'll be real brief, um, after the last meeting, I mentioned, um, I was leaving, I went to Tallahassee, and I met with James Harris, and we went around and saw some of the legislators, it was kinda quiet, but a lot of buzz was going on as far as, you know, being in special session. Uh, budgets are being discussed now, and um, James and I, he uh, affirmed with me that he has spoken with the appropriation department. Um, you know, so Oakland is being considered, you know, Oakland's being seen, so um, we're in a, we're in a good state with that. But again, of course, we know it's still a process, session starts early this year, starts in January, and so uh, those um, meetings that's happening now in December, I mean, sorry, that's happening now in in the Octobers and the Novembers are very critical, and so I just um, just wanna make sure that we continue to um, you know, stay on top of that and, you know, do all we can. But I, what, well, what I really wanna talk about is, and I'll be real quick, when I got this agenda, it it made me reflect back on uh, some of the seeds that were placed in this town, I called Mr. Park, and I remember when we first started going after these sewer projects, and I know um, you know, development, people been trying to come here, even myself, I, you know, I do, you know, haircut and barber, I mean haircut, cleaners, all the stuff outside of this town, but it just, it 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 warms my heart to see some of the development that's coming now. That project, I know we haven't developed, we haven't approved it yet, but you know, when I was talking to Mr. Park, and we we talked about when we first started going after sewer, and that was close to ten years ago, and we are seeing the fruits of that work then, now. And also, you know, when we think about the school, we have a eighth school, y'all. That school was placed here by the vision of former Mayor Vanderlei, because there was a void when it came to our students in this town, as it was mentioned, you know, they had to walk through some of these areas to get to the school, they couldn't catch a couldn't ride a golf cart, so I just want people to not to forget, and 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 the only person that was here when that school was developed, or just talked about, was was um, Vice Mayor Satterfield, so there's a lot of work that's been going into this town five, ten, fifteen years ago to get where we are, you know, you look at Riley Farms and how they going to impact the uh, the nature preserve. Commissioner Ramos talked about the connectivity, there's people in here that love their golf carts, we talked about the the Satter Farm, I mean, um, yeah, there's something to Satter um, Park, there's so many things that's happened, but a lot of that has been placed, or been started working on in in this sheet, and you know, in the early, you know, mid-two thousands, but I also wanna say uh, when you sat, we listened to the the state of the of the town, and I loved how the the mayor and and the different apartments share all the divisions, all the visions of what's going on, it was a great job, and so I, you know, our job is really. job and show, you know, our job is really, and along with the residents, it's just to, you know, be here to help, you know, take us from where we've been, where we're going and try to make sure that we stay on the same page. And I'm just glad when I see these developments, because if you look at Fourth Street, so many developments came here, potentially developments came here. And it, and it wouldn't have met what we're looking for. There were hotels, there were apartments, there were so many things. So I just want to, I really want to give a big shout out to Mike Parker because he is the one that really quarterback a lot of these things that we are going to benefit now, just like Mr. Vanderlei, the school in play. And now we got an eighth school getting extra dollars and it's, it's teaching our kids. Mr. Parker did a lot of work to get us to where we are. And I just, you know, I'm so glad that what we're doing now is continuing that model, but we just can't forget the Parkers and the Vanderleis and those that, and also I call them Skeet and Satterfield, that really, you know, plant the seeds that, for the things that we're doing right now. Because as we all know, this place is not that big. Another four or five years, we'll be developed. And all we're going to be doing is maintaining and making sure that we keep this place safe, looking beautiful. So I just want to say, I'm very happy to what we are seeing right now and I just looking forward to it. That state of the town really told that story, but it also built on what was already announced. And I thank you so much for allowing me to be a part of this. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Ramos?
Yeah, you know, at one point, that Fourth Street property was supposed to be an RV, an RV repair shop and rental, remember, a long time ago. So I mean, it's, it's gone through a lot of ideas and nothing came to fruition until now. And I think that we're all going to benefit from it. Our, we're headed towards the right way to get, you know, towards the right direction for the tax base to start, you know, trickling down as soon as we start, you know, three, four, five years from now, start bringing that back. And great state of the union. I thought it was a great idea, Shane, putting the videos and actually, because I've gone to several of them and there's always, you know, trying to speak from the heart on the subject, when in reality, it's someone else's passion and it comes out better from that person. So it was a great idea, Shane, to have the guys do their own videos and, and tell it from their heart on what they feel in their, in their scope of what they do better. So I thought it was great. Thank you for also mulling and thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, for all those years of helping us get where we're at. Thank you, Ms. Keller, for being eloquently, you know, bringing it down to the level that we all need to understand. And Shane, thank you for the leadership. Thank you. Kind of brings to my red scalp. Good night and may God bless. I'm good tonight.
Thank you. And, and again, thanks. I thought it was a great turnout. Appreciate you guys being there to, to support and, and the staff. You know, those, those video ideas, Elise, I give her a little bit of credit on that too. After we attended the state of the county, we were like, we got to do something on that, but not, she told me there wasn't a lot of money to do anything. But we found it and it was good. I would like to say Halloween's is Friday. So if you're out there trick or treating, or you live in the neighborhood and you got a lot of kids in it, just be careful out there, please, with kids and, and slow down and, and take it easy. I'm sure our police department will be out there as well, trolling. I know the hotspots will be Oakland Park and probably over in Hall Island and then in those areas over there, Longleaf. So just, just be careful out there, please. Other than that?
Right of our hearts and minds are satisfied. Let's adjourn. It is 8:52 PM.